Forty-five seconds.
No pressure, no pressure. Okay. We're in. Fire it up first.
We good to go?
We'll be in a couple days.
Like to call the new re-planning board meeting of January eighteenth, Wednesday, January eighteenth to order.
Oh, that wait just a minute.
You said it again.
I know. Sorry.
What did you say?
Well, this is better because I actually have five fifty-nine on my clock, so.
All right, well, we got ten seconds according to that one, so I'm going by.
I'm recording, you can say it all again, sorry.
And to go, I like to call the Wednesday, January eighteenth, new re-planning board meeting to order. We have a quorum, Ted and I, Lou and Randy are not here. So, we're good to go. Requiring voting eligibility, Ted and I were both at the last meeting, so we, I think we were, so we can vote. So, I would like to have a motion for approval for the minutes of the prior meeting on Wednesday, December seventh, I believe, the last time.
I wasn't there.
Yeah.
I move that we set the minutes of the meeting on Wednesday, December seventh, twenty twenty-two as written.
It has been moved and I am seconding it. All those in favor? It's been moved and seconded and voted and approved. For the meeting board minutes. Business. Reports, Matterhorn Starwood Fire Pond update.
No.
No, you get the wrong agenda.
Oh, I thought I worked the right one. Well, there we go, I got the right one now, okay, yeah, let's move on, let's put that one over there. I got the date right though, what I mean.
You did, you did, you did well.
This primary meeting. Possible amendment to the, to an approved subdivision coming soon.
That will be probably for the February.
First.
Nope, February, the second meeting in February, so it'll be the twenty-second. The applicant knows he has to, has to have everything into me by February. It's just a minor amendment, it's up on Chase Hill. Splitting a lot, that's it.
Okay, so that's an easy one.
Yeah.
Excuse me. Open discussion, continued U D R O edits for campgrounds definitions. Well.
Bruce, do you want me to go over the notes I took?
Yes, please.
For the campground committee?
That would be great, thank you.
Okay. So, I sat in on the campground committee meeting, which was just prior to this one, and the district, they have affirmed they want it only allowed in, campground's only allowed in the rural district. No permanent structures, with the exception of a communal shower slash kitchen type building. If, if campground does come before the board or we can fit it into our definitions, their recommendation is to have just that one type of building, very similar to the legal non-conforming campground that is up the road here on Route twenty-six. We're still, the one thing that we are a little hung up on was the no motorized vehicles allowed in the rural campground. State campgrounds actually do allow motorized vehicles, so. So, there's another member here for the committee that actually brings his thirty-foot tow hook into Rainley State Park. So, we're, I'm gonna, we could look into Acadia, who Brooks said doesn't do motorized.
No, Acadia doesn't do, Black, Black Brook or, there's two campsites up in Acadia, the same campsites, and I don't think either one of them allow.
Motorized?
Motorized.
Okay. If we do allow motorized, let's say a, a conversion van or a small pop-up, there's no hookups. This is what the committee's recommendation was. Time limits, you know, one or two weeks up to a month. Do we want to look at limiting how long people can stay in this campground? I think we have touched upon that already. Rural wilderness type, so no yurts, no, you know, half cabins with a tent dome.
Lean-tos.
No lean-tos, no permanent structures. They would like to make it seasonal, seasonal being summer season. May would be the Friday before Memorial Weekend through Columbus Day Weekend. And if they wanted to, they could have a central dump station, so those sprinter vans, those pop-ups that do have restroom facilities in them could actually dump their black waste. Grafton Notch Campground has that capability. So, that would be something in line with what we currently have. The biggest takeaway, the committee wants to keep the viewscape. Route twenty-six viewscape. And to that end, the committee discussed and want some, you know, possibility of a moratorium and discuss a scenic byway. Go back to the DOT guy that I contacted, ask him to come to a planning board or a joint planning board selectmen meeting, and let's talk about a scenic byway. Been twenty-odd years since that came up in front of the town. It doesn't limit any development, but if we ask for a moratorium, maybe we don't allow any development until we vet that scenic byway. I can run that by Loretta tomorrow and get some guidance on how we do a moratorium.
Sounds good to me.
All right.
And then we have dissolved that committee, so.
Yeah, but just with the exception of the first item in this report, everything was beyond the scope of the committee.
Correct.
Visinated to look into.
Yeah, these were just recommendations they wanted to pass along.
Yeah.
Gives us something, you know, for us to also still work on, yeah.
And as a committee, we still maintain the right for freedom of speech and freedom of expression. So, you can't limit what our discussion comes up with.
And if it was necessary in the future to reconvene a committee, up until that time.
Bruce is gonna send me an email, I will forward it on to the town administrator and the select board letting them know, so they can put it into their record that the committee has been dissolved. However, that legally needs to happen. Okay, all right, that's.
I need to remove the notes.
Yes, you're welcome. Somebody else can jump in now.
So, is there? So, are, are we gonna look into doing some more editing for the, for the campgrounds or U D R O or?
What, what you have in front of you is a draft amendment to the U D R O. There are two of them there, you might be looking at the one that has the footnote that says draft dated zero-one-seventeen-twenty-twenty-three.
Yeah, on this, yeah, so there's two different documents?
There are two, there is an initial draft and then there's a revision to the initial draft. The one that you want is the one that has the footnote.
Oh, I got your.
You can disregard, you can disregard and trash the other one.
But then there's still this as well, the recreational lodging facilities.
Well, that's, that's, let me, then, okay, I, I've, in front of you is a draft of an amendment to the U D R O to insert into chapter thirteen, performance standards, these section, a new subsection titled recreational lodging districts, or lodging facilities, excuse me.
Okay.
Okay? So, that also entails changing some definitions. So, if, does everybody have that one that says, okay, so?
Right, this one?
Chapter, the first section there is just the history of the edits that have been made to this document and a brief description of what those edits were. The second section definitions are recommendations to edit or insert new definitions into the U D R O. The first definition is, that is a campground. The current definition for a campground as written in the U D R O is any area or tract of land to accommodate two or more parties in a temporary living quarters, including but not limited to tents, recreational vehicles, or other shelters to which a fee is charged. I am recommending we change that to be campground C recreational lodging facility. The next definition is a new definition, a new definition creating a recreational lodging facility. There is no current definition of U D R O for a current, for a recreational lodging facility. I am proposing that we create a definition for a recreational lodging facility, a facility which primarily caters to users who engage in recreational activities that are primarily natural resource based. The term includes, but is not limited to, commercial sporting camps, youth or group camps, backcountry huts, rental cabins, outpost cabins, outdoor education institutions, and campgrounds. These facilities contain campsites of temporary or permanent structures, including without limitation tents, recreational vehicles, cottages, cabins, yurts, and other types of shelters which are used or rented for sleeping purposes by tourists, transients, students, staff, organization members, or other visitors. Recreational lodging facility include, but is not limited to, any facility that is regulated by the State of Maine Department of Health and Human Services, D H H S, rules related to campgrounds, specifically their rule ten dash one forty-four, C M R two zero five. Furthermore, recreational lodging facilities include, but is not limited to, any facility that is regulated by the State of Maine Department of Health and Human Services, rules relating to youth camps, primitive and trip camping, their rule number ten dash one forty-four, C M R two zero eight. And finally, recreational lodging facilities does not include hotel, motel, home occupation bed and breakfasts, individual private campsites, recreational facilities, residential dwelling units, or the rental of residential dwelling units or rooms in a residential dwelling unit. So, this is a much broader definition than just the old campground definition. And it reflects the changes that have occurred in the last twenty, thirty years in the outdoor industry. It is also, a recreational lodging facility's actually been well-defined and enacted in the State of Maine Land Use Planning Commission document. There's a whole subchapter in their list of regulations. Now granted, since we're an incorporated town, we don't fall under the Land Use Planning Commission. But, the, the concept of recreational lodging facility, I think, is, as, as per the definition, much broader and gives, is a much more comprehensive coverage to that industry. So, that's why I am suggesting that we go that way.
I like it because we have Riley and Grafton on either side of us that do fall under the Land Use Commission rules. So, that would streamline us, because we have to drive through us to get there. So, it would streamline us with what the Land Use Planning Commission requires, so.
That's good.
It also, there was some, some comments in previous discussions of campgrounds that it doesn't always capture not-for-profit organizations or faith-based organizations that seem to try to sneak around it because they're not a for-profit industry. So, this definition captures all of that. So, so, you had a question for?
Yeah, what is, what is trip camping? Trip, is that what you mean?
Well, like the Enderstog and canoe trail? People, they're coming down, they pull out, they camp, they get back in the boat, they leave.
Oh, okay.
You know, like when you go canoeing down the river?
Allagash, that type of thing, that would be trip camping.
Okay. Might be a little rough in the sun of the river, the bear river.
Yeah, they're, they're game, they'll try it.
So, moving on, the next, next definition, again, is a new definition. And the definition, the term is primitive campsite. There is currently no definition in the U D R O for primitive campsite. And I am proposing a primitive campsite, a recreational lodging facility unit in an undeveloped section of the recreational lodging facility with no facilities or amenities such as water, electricity, or toilets and/or showers, where campers are expected to leave little or no evidence of human visitation.
What about outhouses, privies?
Yeah, that's, that's what I was.
I'm. Primitive campsites may, from what I've seen.
May or may not.
May or may not have, have, have a privy. You know, because all you need is somebody to come in with a little portable tent, dig a hole, and now you have a privy.
Well, no, that, no, by state definition, that's not a privy, that's something.
No, it's a structure.
These are actually something that a soil scientist goes out, designs, eye permit as a plumbing inspector, and they're allowed to put out, you know, to vent it, similar to what Grafton Notch has.
That might be something that we want to discuss or look into.
I think for human waste, that would be good.
That certainly would be good, given the, the, the concern about soiling groundwater or streams and whatnot.
When you're in Cataden, in Baxter State Park, Hollywood's Catadens Dream Campsite is an example, they might have, you know, six campsites, one privy. So, I mean, we could certainly, you know, they could spread out, they could be very wilderness-like, but then still have one spot for that.
If you're having, if you're having a primitive campground facility.
Correct.
Right, I mean, if you're hiking on the A T or something like that.
Even that, Oldsback has one, Oldsback has one.
When he says, when it says here, no facilities or amenities such as water, electricity, or toilets, showers, is a privy fall under the category of a toilet?
I, I, I think I would want to be very clear for any developer that's thinking of putting in a primitive campsite and, and explain that state permitted or soil-tested privies are allowed. I'd have to work on that language.
So, we would have to come up with some.
Soil-tested, I would say soil-tested, tested outhouse.
I have, I have, well, they're called privies on the.
Yeah, all right.
So.
So, add verbiage, add verbiage specifically addressing a privy.
From the sub, I'll, I'll get that from the subsurface wastewater rules and send it to you.
Good point.
We'll follow what the state says on those.
Fine, I'd say, there's another, moving on, to the next new definition, the definition of a recreational lodging facility unit. There is no current definition in the U D R O for a recreational lodging facility unit. I am proposing that a recreational lodging facility unit be defined as an individual campsite or individual campsites within a recreational lodging facility. And the reason that we have that is because we'll be using the term recreational lodging facility unit in the performance standards.
Yes.
Okay, so, those are the changes that I'm, I came up with and for the board to consider in regards to campgrounds and now recreational lodging facilities. Amending the current definition of campground, adding several new definitions. Next, we move on to performance standards. And I drafted up a performance standards, first, an amendment to section thirteen, which is performance standards in our U D R O. The next sequential one is A F, although we have a couple that are reserved, we could probably reuse. So, my subsection is divided into three further sections. The first section is one application, and I would like to change application to applicability. So, if you would do a pen and ink correction to applica, one dot application and make that one dot applicability.
Tried it on my syllables to count them.
And under applicability, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven subpar paragraphs.
Right here, cross that out.
Oh, application, okay.
Application, change that to applicability. So, the first subparagraph of applicability is, A, campgrounds are included under the definition of recreational lodging facilities. I would probably suggest that we, since that is kind of redundant, that we scratch that. Any comments on that?
I like that.
It works to make it simpler.
All right, so, subparagraph B, where a recreational lodging facility takes place in shoreline zoning districts, the provision of the shoreline zoning ordinance applied, and the more restrictive of the two shall govern. That is just standard verbiage that we use throughout the U D R O.
Yeah.
Which works.
Because a shoreline zoning campground provision is thirty thousand square feet for a campsite, so, they would, they are more strict.
When a recreational lodging facility is reviewed by the planning board's site plan review, approval in accordance with this ordinance or section, I probably would change ordinance to section, is required.
Or section.
Okay.
Change ordinance to section. D, all new recreational lodging facilities must be developed in conformance with the standards of this section. Non-conforming recreational lodging facilities must abide by, and that section twenty-three I of the ordinance, I missed, I mistyped that, so it's changed twenty-four I to twenty-three I.
Okay.
And twenty-three I of the U D R O, it specifically deals with non-conforming uses, lands, et cetera. So, there was no need to reinvent the wheel.
No.
On that. Moving on to subparagraph E, if two or more recreational lodging facilities are located on a budding parcel and are under unified or affiliated ownership or control, they shall be deemed to be one recreational lodging facility for purposes of this section. Kind of straightforward, so.
Okay.
So, not that somebody buy two adjoining budding pieces of land and be able to put in a hundred campsites when the U D R O would say one hundred fifty.
Right.
F, recreational lodging facilities must conform to the minimum requirements imposed under state licensing procedures. The planning board's approval is conditional on the state licensing approval. Again, standard verbiage is used.
It's the same thing we use D E P when it comes to subdivisions, same shoreline zone, chicken and the egg, we kind of need to come together.
And I am proposing that G be moved to the next section down.
Under regulations?
Under regulations. And that is, all recreational lodging facilities must be inspected annually by May first, and if found to be in compliance with the applicable new regordnances issued a permit by the code enforcement office.
So, in compliance with applicable new regordnances at the time the campground was approved?
Well, it, it would have to be, for a non-conforming campground, it would have to be.
Yeah.
That.
We want to have that language?
No, I think it's already, it's already covered up there above that where it says, non-conforming recreational lodging facilities must abide by section twenty, twenty-three I. And under there, in twenty-three I, it stipulates that they can continue.
They're used, okay.
As long as they stay within the, the parameters described in twenty-three I.
So, where, where does that get marked in regulations? Is it the last one, or?
No, I'd put it, I'd slide it in there at the very top is what I did.
Move all the letters down.
Yeah, move, move all the letters down. And also, now we're into subparagraph two, regulations, I would change that to, for, uh, what did I, what did I, operating, operating standards.
Instead of regulations?
Instead of regulations, operating standards.
Okay.
Remember that check, that's chapter thirteen, or section thirteen is performance standards, so we have operating standards, and later on we'll see we have language standards.
Okay.
Okay, so, subparagraph A would be what was above there, as all recreational lodging facilities must be inspected. B would be, each recreational lodging facility unit will be provided a trash receptacle of thirty gallons of origin. C, which used to be B.
Yeah.
Each recreational lodging facility unit and/or any common area equipped with a fire pitch shall be equipped with a smokeless fire pit, the construction of which must be provided by the code enforcement officer. And the code enforcement officer is informing that after being educated by the youth group university, then taking.
They're very cool, very easy to base.
Taking courses one oh one, one oh two, and one oh three as soon as comfortable with that.
Get a tire rim, you know, get a wheel rim, you know?
You get a wheel rim, you punch it with holes, it's the way the air drops. That takes it, I'm not gonna say smokeless, but a lot less smoke, huh? Or you can buy, you can buy solo, you can buy a bunch of different manufactured ones, so whatever they want to do.
Yeah, tire, tire rim would be good though.
There's a recreational facility in a neighboring town that went with smokeless, and they are a big hit.
Yeah.
Next, subparagraph, new subparagraph D, X, used to be C. A facility manager must be on premise twenty-four hours a day when the recreational lodging facilities in operation. Straightforward.
Mm-hmm.
Next one, quiet hours must be enforced between ten P M and seven A M. Again, straightforward. F, a recreational vehicle or a unit for a recreational, for a recreational vehicle may not be rented, leased, or occupied for more than two weeks consecutively from November first through May first, unless the recreational vehicle is connected to a permanent sewage, water, electricity, and heat that will meet state and local codes. During this period, renewal of any occupancy in the recreational vehicle or unit may not occur unless there is at least one week of non-occupancy.
All right, so, if we're, if we're, are we looking, but we're looking at May to November for, for campsite, for campgrounds?
They're, they're, they're looking at November to May, so.
No, no, they're being missing here, but we had talked about earlier about.
The committee wanted to put forth to the planning board a recommendation that it be a summer seasonal campground used locally.
Welcome, so.
But I, I am recommending that we allow winter camping because it is, especially in this area of the ski resort, a sought-after potentially useful and/or business that somebody might want to conduct.
In the ski area district?
These U D R O performance standards do not address the development district. That was something that was left for the committee to review and put forth.
So, these would be used only in the rural district, these definitions?
Because that's what.
It would be used wherever the. the section twenty-three land use table allows recreational facilities.
Currently, in the rural district?
Currently, assuming that campgrounds would be, that recreational lodging facilities would be substituted for the the line in the table for campgrounds, then it would be only the rural district.
Okay.
Again, these standards are separate from the chapter twenty-three land use or land use table and the developments districts that we have. That's a separate issue.
So there is a tiny chunk of rural accessible
That's basically inaccessible, right?
No, no, it is accessible.
Oh.
It's deep, it buds up against a subdivision, but it's, it's not that it's, not that it can't be developed. Or it would have to be some type of permissible crossing of the general development district to get into some of these rural areas? On this side, if a developer decides they want to do that for the winter use, which is Sunday River Ski Resort.
So right the line, so, so where, I, I continue to say like, but I guess I'm trying to figure out, coming down Sunday River Road.
Yep, this is the peaks.
Right.
Yep.
And so, so you're talking that piece of property right on the Sunday River, that, it's probably Harringtons.
Charlie Beans.
The Charlies?
Charlie Beans.
Charlie Beans and Fred Burr.
Okay, so I mean, but that's all, that should be wetland in there anyways.
Well, once you cross through the, once you get through this dark green, which is resource protection, this is rural.
That's gotta be, okay, so it's a little higher up on the other side there.
Yeah, it is, I mean, it's a potential spot. Just saying, it's just potential.
Can't see Charlie in front of you.
Again, these are performance standards and they are not, they don't take into consideration current or future development district limitations or allowances.
These are definitions that we operate within?
These are performance standards that we operate in wherever the town will allow a recreational lodging facility.
For the table of land uses in section twenty-three.
For the table of land uses in chap- in chapter twenty-three. That's a separate, related but separate.
We'll get there. First they see if they can check off the land use table and if that meets it, then you can start. Then we start.
Exactly, exactly.
Then you can dig into the details, that's right. Okay.
Alright, so, so the reasoning, talking a little bit more about the new subsection F, recreational vehicle, unit, dah 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 dah. One was to allow winter use because there is potential interest in people to do that. But to prevent long-term housing, i.e. a recreational vehicle that becomes a permanent temporary facility for a temporary worker in the valley.
I.e. Hannover.
And thus, that's the, the requirement for sewage, water, electric, and heat that meets state and local codes and also the requirement that occupancy can be no longer than two weeks. And then there has to be a one week of
They go someplace else.
They go someplace else.
So this whole winter camping thing and all that stuff, they can, they can hook up permanently, but they have to move every two weeks?
No, if they hook, if, if they are hooked up permanently, that is, that would, we might want to look at that because that might be a loophole because it says here a meant to recreational is connected to a permanent sewage, water, electricity, and heat that will meet state and local codes.
Right.
So I'll play devil's advocate there. We do not, Norway has them, Oxford had them. People bought land, moved in camper, hooked up to electricity, had their subject tank installed at the leach field, and had their recreational unit. They added on a wooden sunroom, they added on a deck, they built a shed, they turned it into their home. That's what we're trying to limit, do I understand that right?
Well, what you just described is a private campsite. If it's on their own property and it's only one
And not allowed by state, by state law.
Well, that's, that's, that's your, that's your Bayley. That's your, that's your Bayley, when you say this isn't illegal, this isn't a dwelling and therefore you can't do that.
But this is a, I come in and I set up a campground.
In a campground.
In a recreational lodging facility, you come in and you rent the unit, you bring in your army, and you're gonna camp there for the, in the wintertime unless you have a, and this is written right now, unless you have the hookups.
Yeah.
You can only be there for two weeks.
Right, right.
So in Snowbirds, they rent a spot in Panama City at one of these giant RV parks and they have all these facility hookups, electricity, water, plumbing, they have all of that. And they're there for four months, is that how you envision this?
That's something that we needed, is right now, the way this is written, that's a possibility. We may want to tighten this up and say, then take away the provision there by the hookup and just say, period, you can only be here for two weeks.
Okay.
That's something, that's something to be looked at because again, I don't, some of this, you know, I, this one I probably borrowed from some other town.
That's where they all come from.
So, but that's, but that is, that is something that we might want to look at and say, do we want to tighten this up more? And maybe it just says that it can only be a transient, two-week rental.
Year round or only?
So I mean, could we, could we?
It is only in the winter, right now, the way this is written is from November first to May first.
Right.
Well, can't we just scratch this out now?
You can't, how would you, how would you reword it then?
Well, would you just have a recreational vehicle or a recreational, may not be rented, leased, or occupied for more than two weeks consecutively through November first, May first?
So basically take out the unless, rip this.
And take out the bottom part of that paragraph. We can just eliminate that.
Alright, so I will rework, so I am not opposed to that, I can, I will reword that, we can look at it and see which one we want to go with.
Do we really want to see an RV unit, whether it's motorized or, or a tent? Vehicle or unit with recreational vehicle may not be rented. Do we really want to see somebody living there in winter conditions with no sewage, water, or electricity or heat?
Well, you go back to the lamping, you go back to the lamping where you could be in a winterized yurt and you had a washroom down yonder pathway.
And a little wood stove inside.
And a little wood stove inside, there is no, there is a self-contained water tank inside. There is no water, really water.
No.
There's no toilet, if you start, once you start bringing in a toilet, even if it's a
Composting.
Composting one, now you start playing around, if it's a permanent dwelling
Yes, yeah.
Or permanent, if it's a permanent fixture, now you start toying with, with it being a dwelling. So that's, those are things that need to be probably tightened, looked at and tightened up and draw all the jur-
I grow to know, need to think about.
Yeah.
So, so are we, are we leaving that in there then for now?
Well, I will rewrite that to take out the, the, unless
Yeah, period after May first.
Yeah, and I will, I will rewrite that to tighten that up so that it is a two-week rental period max.
And then, but then you can keep the bottom piece, but during that period of renewal of occupancy and the recreational vehicle, you know, may not occur unless there's at least one week of nonoccupancy, or it gets moved like the same.
Now remember, we're talking recreational, this is talking, this is solely recreational vehicles, it's not a yurt.
Okay, right, right.
It's not, it's not a cabin.
It says right up on top.
It's not a shelter, it's just a recreational vehicle.
Because the state requires that for two weeks you get a leave. I mean, you can go ten feet next door, but you move from that one spot, you have to be out for a week and then you can come back.
I'm not aware that the state
No, the state has nothing to do with it.
No.
It's just the town.
I mean, from what I, from my understanding, like with state law, like if I go to a state, because I had friends that we, we camp, like we were rafting, you know, we'd have little sites out in the woods and the people come along and say, okay, you have to move after two weeks.
That might be their policy, but I'm not aware that it's
That might be the land use planning permission for unorganized territory that limits that.
Yeah, like South, going out Richardson and doing remote camping type of thing, you reserve that for however long you've reserved it for. After that, yeah, get off, next person's coming in.
Yeah.
So this is strictly, this is, the next, actually, this one and the next two are all strictly recreational vehicles.
Okay.
Okay. So the next one, which is new G, old F. Recreational vehicles that are, that are at individual recreational lodging facility units shall not have permanent foundations and shall not have the wheels removed. And then that's kind of straightforward again, to avoid them becoming dwellings. The next one, a tent, trailer, camper, recreational vehicle or similar device used for camping may be stored within a storage area on the premise of the recreational lodging facility provided that the device is not utilized or inhabited while located within the storage area. Recreational lodging units may not be used as a storage area. Pretty straightforward. So that last sentence there prevents somebody coming with their two-story motor, uh, two-story trailer, winterizing it and leaving it on site and then renewing their lease for the next year and the year after that, and the year after that, and the thing never moves.
Right. So we can point right down the road with some of that happen, so we don't do that, good.
Yeah, so they would have to, at the very minimum, move this trailer to a designated storage facility on the premise.
Tarp it over and it stays parked there for the winter.
If they want to tarp it over, they can certainly do that, but they can't leave it at
At the unit.
At the unit.
Okay.
Or any unit for that. It has to be a
So it has to be a designated storage area?
A designated storage area.
I like that.
So those are, those are the operating performance standards.
I like that.
And we'll move on now to the land use standards. The land use standards were all taken off of the worksheet that we all poured over for several different
Yep.
meetings. And so what you see here is a reflection of those, that final determination that we have. The first one is minimum site size will be ten acres. So no recreational lodging facility smaller than ten acres total in size. B is density. The maximum density of a recreational lodging facility shall be one unit per five thousand square feet of suitable land area except for primitive campsites, shall be ten thousand square feet. And then there's another sub paragraph for that, says land supporting wetland vegetation and land below the normal high water line of a water body shall not be included in calculating the land area per site.
So they can't find a little high spot in the wetland and call it a campsite?
Right. And I think that is pretty, well, not permanent campsites, but I know the five thousand square feet is the same in the shoreline, shoreline zoning. Maximum number of units. The maximum number of units used as sleeping accommodations in a recreational lodging facility excluding staff housing for the facility shall be fifty units. Again, we discussed that in the review there. The planning board may permit, permit reasonably necessary staff housing as an accessory used to a recreational lodging facility. Staff housing must be designated on the site plan application and may not be used as a recreational lodging facility unit.
Hence, an employee being on site twenty-four hours for an open campground.
If it's not the owner.
Yeah, yeah.
Or, and, and I, originally I had employee in there, I changed that to staff, again, to accommodate a not-for-profit or faith-based organization that running a camp or running a lodging facility.
Right, because they might be a volunteer.
They might be a volunteer, so staff is much more inclusive in that regards.
And an owner could be a staff.
And an owner could be a staff. And again, the, the final paragraph was to prevent staff housing from all of a sudden becoming a unit.
A rented unit, yeah.
A rented unit.
Okay.
Minimum setbacks. A unit of a recreational lodging facility shall meet the following setback requirements. And again, this was all agreed upon on the, on the worksheet. At least one hundred feet from the center line of any public street or highway and twenty-five feet on the edge of the right-of-way or road providing access to the unit.
Okay, so it doesn't say providing though, it's just a small typo.
At least one hundred feet.
Oh, yeah, it says proving.
Proving, providing, okay.
It's a word, spell check didn't check it.
Yeah, that's right.
I knew what you meant. We all read it that way.
Providing access to the unit.
Okay.
At least fifty feet from the property line of abiding properties. At least one hundred feet from the normal high watermark of a great pond, river, stream, brook, or upland edge of a wetland. The area intended for placement of utility and service buildings and accessory uses associated with camping activities such as fire pits, clotheslines, and picnic tables shall be set back a minimum of fifty feet from the exterior lot line, one hundred horizontal distance, one hundred feet horizontal distance from the normal high water line of a great pond, river, territory, stream, or upland edge of a wetland.
That, that gives some great buffers, I think, to neighboring properties, I think that's good.
And then, E, a recreational lodging facility unit that consists of temporary or permanent structures such as yurts, cabins, cottages, and other types of structures cannot be placed within the U D R O. And finally, visual buffers, recreational lodging facilities shall be screened from abiding areas according to performance standards in section thirteen dot A A, which is screens and buffers. Already defined in the, in the U D R O.
Bruce, can you walk?
No, I've got something, I just choked up a little bit. Alright, I'll keep on.
So that's, those are my, that's a draft amendment to the U D R O setting up performance standards for a new beast called recreational lodging facility. And I, my intent here was to make it a little more broader encompassing and to be able to accommodate today's recreational and tomorrow's recreational activities in the great outdoors. A lot of this, while it's very technical reading, if you want to go take a look at recreational lodging facilities in the land use planning commission website page, the link which is up there in the first section, it says edits.
Oh, yeah, yeah, gotcha.
They are incredibly technical, they have five different levels of recreational lodging facilities and it is mind-boggling. But then they also are probably tuned in to bigger landmass areas and bigger rivers and
Up around Mooshead.
Yeah.
So please take this home, put it in your pillow, sleep on it.
Thank you, doesn't want to work, thank you very much.
Any comments, and again, let me stress that this is a performance standard that is, has nothing to do with the development districts that we have defined and the restrictions that we have placed on them with the land use data. That's a separate, it's a separate Bayley.
Yeah, this is something that we're lacking, we don't have definitions.
We don't have definitions and we have we have, already have some institutions that would, that currently are not covered, that would be covered by this in the town.
Yeah, there's one on each valley, one on each valley, right? Okay.
As for when we want to, how we want to proceed with this, that's a whole different discussion as to when we want to present this to the, define this and then present it to the select board and then to the town.
Well, are we gonna wait and see what we get with, um, the moratorium?
Has that been brought up yet in this meeting? The moratorium or the byway? Did I talk about that? I'm losing track of which meeting I say what in.
Well, that was, you mentioned it, you just teased us with it with your recap of the, of the committee meeting.
Yeah, so, I will.
So, before we move on to anything else, um, as I said, don't disregard the first edition unless you want to see what edits I made from the first edition to the second edition.
The edition that we're all working with is dated one seventeen twenty twenty-three. That's the one we're working with.
And it's the one we're working with. And I will take some of these that are already mentioned, like applicability and whatnot, put it into the next revision.
Okay.
Uh, I will come up with, I will redo the one on the winter camp, winter recreational vehicle. Um, one thing that I think we need, that we should think about and bring up for discussion at the next meeting is, uh, glamping, winter glamping, and whether or not that is covered sufficiently in this imposed amendment or if we need to come up with something more.
Yeah, I want to think about that a little bit tomorrow. Tomorrow, Monday.
Because, you know, we talked about recreational vehicles and two weeks in the wintertime, we don't talk about yurts or.
Right.
Or cabins or what have you in the wintertime, so.
Okay. Okay.
So, um, I guess for more open discussion, we talked about, um, possibility of bringing forth maybe a moratorium until a further study can be done for, um, you know, looking into scenic byway, looking at that again.
Doc, come on, Chris Sal, you don't need me. Me and Bo.
Okay, I'm listening. Remind me.
Well, just, you know, I mean, I mean, I, I don't, I don't foresee, I don't know anything that's coming up, I mean, as far as development.
A, how, how would a, how would a scenic byway, what's, what, scenic byway is a what?
Is this a designation from the state? It gets us some advertising. It does not limit any development whatsoever.
Okay.
But it may help.
Can I explain? Uh, back when it was discussed and brought before the town, it was principally to protect viewscapes. So, in other words, uh, we're pretty unique in this town in that you can drive up Sunday River Road, see all the development you want, but you drive up Route twenty-six, it's a gateway to the Great North Woods. The reason that, uh, it's a scenic route as it is with an official designation would open up, uh, money for funds to, to, uh, improve the road. But it also allow us to, uh, if there was gonna be campgrounds, they can be campgrounds, but they can't be seen. We pretty much, it's exactly the way that it's, uh, there wouldn't have to be any changes in the, in the districts because the districts are laid out that way with that intent.
So, so, you're saying that a scenic byway would put in something aside from the U D R O that restricts development? And, and would have land use regulation?
No, this, this would be incorporated into the U D R O.
I thought you said it doesn't restrict development. Yeah, scenic byways do not restrict any development according to D O T.
So, yeah, so.
That's our purview, to restrict the development.
Anyway, so, so, okay, so what I heard now is that we're gonna come up with a, uh, an amendment to the, to the U D R O that is gonna restrict some type of land use development up Route twenty-six. Is that, is that, did I understand that correctly?
It's gonna direct it to protect the scenic view.
Is it, alright, but you're, you're, we're talking a performance standard, so we're gonna develop a performance standard.
Right, you asked the committee to come up with something. We did, and this is our recommendation. That back, if you want to do some more research, look at the, uh, the scenic byway of what it was, uh, proposed before. And it basically sets up, uh, standards, uh, for development. In other words, if, if you're gonna have a house on the side of the hill, can't see it from the scenic byway.
Okay.
You have to, you have.
Was, was that, was that gonna, was, when that was discussed back in early two thousands, was that actually gonna be incorporated in the U D R O?
It never got to that point.
I mean, I, I don't, I have not read up on scenic byways, but I'm, I'm playing devil's advocate because what I'm hearing is, is, is land use regulation in a document that's outside of the U D R O.
Incorporated into the U D R O.
I can get those books out. They're hard copies. I'll see if I can find them, scan them, then I can email them to you. They're bound, yeah.
So, who's gonna, who will be developing this?
You are.
I am?
You guys.
The, the planning board. The planning board, okay.
Well, I mean, it's, it's, to me, it seems like it's something to give us time to look into, um.
Alright, so, so are you gonna draft up the moratorium language?
I don't know.
Well, no, but that's, that's where I would come in and work with the town attorney or Abco and Loretta.
And just let me see if it's worth it.
But, what are we gonna put on the moritor, so we're gonna restrict all further, further going major minors and site plan applications on Route twenty-six from the Newry Town Line to the.
To Norm Davis's line up to the town line.
And, and so, and how, how are you gonna define the area?
So, yeah, that's something that we would have to ask, that we gotta.
Route twenty-six corridor visual. But that's ambiguous, isn't it?
It is ambiguous. What the, so do we go with just the general development district or do we go with the rural district also in that corridor? So, it'd be all this, the, all the white and all this peachy color. It has to be very defined, whatever we decide to draft or not draft, whether the case may be. But I really think we ought to start with D O T and get some definitions that are current on scenic byway. I think that's the first place I need to start. Because from what I understand from the one email I've had with him and, and it, it could have just been a typo. I don't know. Does, scenic byways do not restrict development at all. So, I wanna, I wanna get that part clarified first.
Because we're, we're talking, we're talking the scenic byway designation, which is a sep, is a funding mechanism for, for making improvements and whatnot to, to enhance tourism
Mm-hmm.
and preservation of natural resources. That goes hand in hand with a corridor management plan, which would have to be developed, which is a big beast, that incorporates, and a corridor management plan, while it could be restricted to the town of Newry, could also be, believe back when the scenic byway was being discussed, there was also a corridor management plan that was going alongside it and that incorporated multi-towns and, and or states.
Yes, Aaron Hampshire was involved.
And then.
It wouldn't have to be.
No, I'm not saying it wouldn't have to be, but, but, um, so, okay, I'm, I'm, I'm cool with that. It's, 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 it's gonna be a lot of work.
Yep.
But I believe a lot of the definitions and a lot of the viewscapes and everything has been identified during that study.
I agree.
So, all of the, you know, all of the views.
Yep.
I mean, to me, it just seems like it's to protect, like I say, so they don't turn White's Field into, you know, a.
Well, it, it's, uh, and, and back there, I mean, you can see up where White's Field is, into the woods, they can do whatever they want in the woods. It's just that, that, you know.
Well, we've already protected White's Fields because they're in the general development district. We're not allowing campgrounds in the general development district as, as of, as discussed currently.
Yeah, like, are we reinventing the wheel by doing this?
It might be a lot of work for nothing if we're gonna limit campgrounds to just rural districts. Because right now, that protects the view shed.
So, maybe just, you need to just leave it alone and just look at the study anyways and just go along with it.
I think, I think our buffer standards, um, you know, maybe we need to look at something with elevation for the buffer standards. We could look at our screening inside our U D I room currently, maybe, like right now, we can see these homes that have been perched on the mountains. Maybe what we need to better define is our view shed. Nothing tops, tops of trees. Right now, you can make out roof lines above all these trees because they all won't use the Sunday River or, or the notch. I think if we define what our view shed is.
The, the construction trees.
Well, that's, that's it, you know?
Yeah.
Even though sometimes they're not supposed to.
Yeah, sometimes we need to just look at our, yeah, value.
They don't care.
We need to look at our view shed standards that we currently have in our buffering section. So, maybe that's where we go with it versus try to reinvent the scenic byway.
Yeah, that wasn't my idea anyways.
Say what?
What's that?
That wasn't my idea anyways, the, the moratorium.
No, no.
No, I just.
No, but the scenic byway designation for roads, I, I, I like where you're going with the improvement of the road part of that. That, but I think that might be a separate issue.
Well, yeah, I don't want to confuse it with that. I mean, that was the carrot they were dangling at the time.
Yeah, and I don't know how the funding is currently for that type of stuff in the state, so. That might be a separate issue than us protecting our view sheds. We might want to look at buffering, screening in our view sheds inside our U D R O currently to protect those view sheds. Might be better than a moratorium. The motor home park, uh, excuse me, the mobile home park at White's Fields is separate outside of what we're discussing right now, but maybe another topic that we need to bring up.
That's it, that's it, really, yeah.
But we have to be careful when we start limiting people's use of their property. Because where does that stop?
Well, you know, that was part of the whole deal back then. It's like, you're not gonna tell me what to do with my lamb.
Right.
Which is still a big deal.
Yeah, not my backyard.
Not my backyard.
Right.
Boom.
Let, let's, let's, everybody look into that a little bit more before we talk moratorium, I guess, so.
Alright, so we gotta look into.
And that, that sends up red flags.
Yeah, then everybody goes on the details.
And I don't, I don't, I don't want, I don't want any taxpayer, whether it's you and you want to throw in four mobile homes in front of your property, or if it's White Fields and they want to put fifty mobile homes in there. I, I don't want to see anybody get up in arms about anything that's just because we're talking, doesn't mean there's anything in concrete. We just want to do our due diligence about studying.
What was the term that you were using in buffers and screenings?
View shed.
View shed.
Yeah.
Yeah, the thing about, the thing about, uh, views, you know, you can never get it back. I mean, take a look at North Conway. I remember you could go and you could, you could see the, the, what's the big ledge there?
Cathedral ledge?
Cathedral ledge.
Yeah.
You could see an unobstructed view and now, you know, it's in between buildings and parking lots and.
Yeah.
You know, views are something you can never get back.
I, I think Greenwood has a view shed or means, so let me, let me look at that. Let me look at that.
Like a butax, you know, the.
No, no, there's no such thing in the state of any.
There's no such thing in the state of New Hampshire. Practically, yes, in legal, in writing, it's not.
Yeah, yeah.
Pragmatically, yes, there is.
Okay.
And there is here too. Your property has an un, unobstructed view of eight peaks, well, excuse me, nine peaks.
Okay, we digress.
Definitely, that property is up there.
Now, do, does the town have any ordinances on tree houses?
Uh, you mean like the, not tree houses that our kids play in, but tree homes for rent? We do not.
That would, wait, such, in, in what way are you asking?
Well, there, there's some for rent in Gorham, New Hampshire, I think.
Yeah, there's a beautiful one in Doorway.
Uh, there's two in Hanover, Rockaway Point, that have gone in.
But, but that's a dwelling.
Yeah, they do have to meet, they do have to meet.
It's a dwelling, so it has to meet.
It's got plumbing and, and everything, but in a tree.
Okay, so, what's, what's the difference there than coming in and building a house on, on pines instead of ten feet up?
I don't know. That's, that's a good question.
They're allowed, uh, by the building code. They do have to meet all the plumbing, subsurface wastewater, electrical. If it's a dwelling, you're gonna live in it, it still has to meet the same state standards that any of our homes do if we build it on the ground.
Which I think is pretty adequately covered.
It is, huh? It is.
Unless there's a specific. I didn't.
I think the ones over level are like a cluster development, and then we do have standards on cluster development.
There's one over in, what is that, the, the way to fiber.
That's, I think, I said level. I could have the town wrong one way, one direction or the other, but yes.
Uh, water.
They've got that, um.
No, water, yeah, was it water?
Stoner?
Yeah.
Level, yeah.
Stoner, stone level, out that way.
Stone, right.
Looks like a chess piece up high on.
Yeah, and, and it's been for sale and for long time now.
Yeah.
And it was a failed mid disc golf course there, so.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Okay. Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, what else do we have going on? I want to eat supper.
That's the end of open discussion.
Yeah, our C E Os had two late nights here.
What's that?
And then I got another one tomorrow. I get till ten o'clock tomorrow.
Alright, so let's get to the next meeting for February first.
Well, that's why you do them in one, two. Are you doing one and two or just one?
One and two.
One and two.
Okay, so February first is our next meeting?
That's what it says in the paper, so, yeah. Hearing that, I would like to make a motion.
Well, wait a minute, now, you said this.
I have the date wrong. I'm gonna call that applicant and get that corrected.
Okay, okay. And we have, we, we had no, as of today, we have, that would be two weeks from today, right?
Yes.
So, we have no other business?
We do not. If we want to go right to February fourteen, fifteen?
Well, it depends if you want to, is there gonna be anything new to develop on this that we want to look at or?
Do we want to give it a whole month to chew on?
Well.
It'd give Gooch a time and Randy to look at the video and, and, and I, I'll email all this, which I think I have already, but I could make sure that they get all the information and they can also be thinking.
In that two weeks. The question, I guess the, the question that the board needs to decide is, are we gonna present anything to town meeting this year or are we taking a bye and holding things until, at the earliest, twenty twenty-four?
Well, right now, I mean, we're on the books for rural development for campgrounds, right?
That's it.
Yeah, so.
But, but, again, you know, like, you know, this, this amendment here or any other amendments that we might want to consider, do we want to try to get those, you know, as the board, do we want to or do we not want to try to get it on the town warrant for twenty twenty-three or do we take a year off and go for twenty twenty-four?
Well, it seems like, you know, if we get this on the books, it'll tighten things up a little bit. Maybe not a lot.
If, if that's the case, then Joel. If that's the case, and Joel, what I would like to do is meet on, what I propose is that we meet on the first.
Okay.
And on the agenda that we, uh, uh, decide on whether or not we are gonna try for any amendments or edits or whatever you want to call it for the U D R O in, in town meeting twenty twenty three.
I mean, what, what's your feeling? Do you think, I mean, if we got, we're, we're, we get some stuff on the, on the.
My feeling is that the town right now is sick of having U D R O issues put forth to them at town, special town meetings and at town meetings and that we probably, even though I'd like to see this in the books yesterday, I'm not sure that, that the political stream in the town right now is tolerant of another U D R O amendment. But it's about growth. I mean, it's about change. You know, and it's about moving forward.
I, I will preface all of that with, the way U D R O edits have been presented the last six years or five years, wherever it was with the previous administration, those turned into be ballot votes out Election Day. They were not discussed at town meeting.
No.
And we're going back to the town meeting way of doing things, and I don't care if we discuss it for an hour. If it's still relevant and the moderator says, yeah, this is an open discussion, this is good, nothing's being repeated, then it'll get vetted well.
No.
On the flip side of that, all I heard about after town meeting last year was we do not want to keep coming back this. Why do we keep editing it? Why don't you do a complete job? Why, why, why? So. Save a little skin on my own self if I, I don't get a vote, but.
But I mean, you know, but we're, I think we're back to, to, to a more limited administration.
We are, yeah.
You know, that, that, that townspeople, I think, are starting to feel good again about our town.
They are, but right now, we are still protected. Campgrounds are only allowed in the rural district.
Yeah.
These definitions would be great. It would tidy things up. I agree. I'd like it on there yesterday. But do we have more work to do in the U D R O? Do we go next year with a more complete list of edits?
Well, my, my feeling is that if, if we're, it's always gonna change. It's always gonna change. Stuff is always gonna come up. I mean, we're never gonna be finished doing anything.
I, I, I agree with you and that of, of, of majority of our constituents, any, they let the acronym U D R O stand for, much less what the, what's decided.
That's right. Until they come to me and they ask to do something, I tell them no, but they get excited and they want to do it.
There you go. And if it's some black and white, then there you go. But I mean, that's my feeling, that, yeah, I would agree with you.
Let's vote on February one.
So, let's discuss, let's put this on the agenda for next week to, to do that. We, um, in addition now, we'll come up with another revise revision of what we discussed here.
Okay.
And if anybody has anything that they send me in time, I'll put it in there. I will, I will, I will put that in there.
Yeah.
And whatnot. Uh, and other than campgrounds, Joel, you said there was, uh, something possible telecommunication lines?
I've had conversations, um, with some random, they won't identify themselves, cellular tower people.
Well, if they're U S A, well, I'm all for it because my reception sucks.
I don't know who they are. I don't know who they are. They're not, they don't even identify the company. They're not telling me what they're, who they are.
The land use table does cover telecommunications towers.
Oh, okay, okay. We were looking in the section.
They require, they require, well, there's no specific performance standards specific to telecommunications towers, but the land use table does require a planning board site plan review.
Yes, okay.
Or.
Yeah, and, and we've done that in Greenwood as well as Longway and Oxford itself. That makes sense. It's a commercial use of all, yeah. Okay.
So, what we don't have is anything specific.
Maybe that's a definition we work on.
Or a performance standard to work on.
I think there's enough performance standards for the planning board to never miss a meeting, to be honest. I mean, as much as I like to have a Wednesday night off, couple of nights a year.
We've done pretty good though, you know.
We have done pretty good, but it is nice that we always look at, look ahead to, to whatever development or trends are happening and say, how does our zoning ordinance? Because that's what the U D R O is. It's a zoning ordinance. How, how do we progress with the times?
That's what I'm saying, you know. The bulk of it is twenty-five plus year rule, so.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yeah, so, okay. I will work on these things. I will get you the view shed just to see how and if we can incorporate that into some, a definition.
Okay, well, I gotta reread the, the buffering section too, which is.
Yeah, me too. Okay.
Alright, so we shall have a scheduled meeting of February first, twenty twenty three at six P M.
And then I'll make a motion to adjourn.
And I will second that motion to adjourn. So, would be all be in favor? Awesome. Alright.
Thank you everybody.
Thank you everybody.
That was good. Ted, great work.